Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our special Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, October 23rd. As always before again, please take a second to silence your phones and then kindly join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do not have Mr. Hatfield tonight, so Mr. Roush is going to take role for us.
President Mc...
Here.
Vice President Roush is here. Secretary Hatfield is absent. Treasurer Lotterback?
Here.
Blazy?
Here.
Member Ringold?
Here.
Member Horowitz?
Here.
Have a quorum, six people.
Okay, thank you. Jumping right in, we are at... To address the board, this is item two on our agenda, and because this is a special meeting, I would ask that anybody who wishes to address the board, please limit your comments to the superintendent's search only. And so with that being said, Espinades, the floor is yours.
Good evening. On January 19th of 2022, I checked on the MPS School Board webpage and found out there was a meeting that morning at 8:30. Joe and I attended that meeting, and I'm sure those in attendance remember, as that was the day I was interrupted twice during my three-minute public comment, after the previous speaker ran over by at least a minute before being stopped. It was after that event, in a FOIA and Open Meeting Act training class that I attended, that I put in a FOIA request in May of 2022 for a six-month subscription, which is the limited amount of time for Freedom of Information Act, to all regular and special meeting agenda packets. Joe and I have been paying about $100 six months for these subscriptions, and one is still currently active. I asked the FOIA coordinator after the last meeting this question. I would like to know why I did not receive the agenda and information about the meeting held on October 10th at 12:00 p.m. The response was about meetings. It had nothing to do with my requested information. I received no real explanation as to why my FOIA request for information about special meetings was not fulfilled. The thing is this, it was stated by several board members last week that the Open Meeting Act was followed and the public was notified. The notice for the special meeting appears to be put on the website at the top dropdown bar on the left, which was not very visible. It was not added to the board's calendar of meetings on the website. Previous special meetings and today's meeting were added to the page, though. In fact, someone looking at the Board of Education page would not even know that that special public meeting on October 10th took place, as there is no visible reference to it, no agenda, no link to it, and in fact, if you search it, it won't bring anything up for October 10th. I was told by Superintendent Penny that it wasn't, that it wasn't because it was a committee meeting and not a special Board of Education meeting. But this wasn't a regular committee meeting, which is why it was, had to be posted for the public. It was a special public meeting, which is why the attempt to fulfill the Open Meeting Act. As far as the Open Meeting Act in Section 15.266, providing copies of public notice on written request, Section 6 says, "Upon the written request of an individual and upon the requesting party's payment, a public body shall send to the requesting party a copy of any notice required to be posted pursuant to Section 5, 2, and 5." I have paid the FOIA fees requesting copies of all agenda packets, including special meetings and regular meetings, and to receive these communications by email. Why not this time? Were you really in compliance with the Open Meeting Act? Thank you.
The answer to that is yes, thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the board? Please, thank you.
Hi, I'm Angie Kelleher. At a previous meeting, one of my neighbors brought up something about the National School Board Association, and I wanted to address that. I think most of you already know this, but in case anyone watching doesn't. Back at the height of the pandemic, when there were mask mandates, there were lots of people attending school board meetings across the country that hadn't before, and some of those got pretty heated, and some school board members were threatened and harassed and even got death threats. I don't think that happened here in Michigan, but some school board members in other states did, and that's when the National School Board Association told the president and his administration that some parents' actions pushing back against critical race theory, mask mandates, and other flashpoints were the equivalent to a form of domestic terrorism. So they were talking about some parents, and some parents did do that. So I don't think it's out of line for the federal government to keep an eye on that issue, and I think that the National School Board Association was advocating for numbers. It never said that parents weren't allowed to voice their concerns, and so I don't think there's any reason to hold any of that against the Michigan Association of School Boards, who are one of our potential search firms. Also wanted to mention that I was looking at articles about other school districts that have done searches, and sometimes when there was an internal candidate, some of the citizens were unhappy if they hired an internal candidate, because they said it was a waste of money. And I just wanted to address that, since we do have an internal candidate. We have Ms. Miller-Nelson, who's a wonderful interim superintendent, and I don't know that she's going to apply, but if she does, I'm glad we're using search firms. I'm glad we're seriously looking at candidates. That will give us a sense of the type of talent that's in the market, so we can compare our internal candidates. It will help us bring a new perspective to the organization. And if our internal candidate is successful, then we will know that she has more credibility and more respect for having gone through that process. I also am glad we're using search firms, because it just helps us to sort of get out of our little bubble and maybe see what other candidates are out there, and I would like to caution us against looking for a culture fit. I think we don't necessarily want someone that exactly fits with our current culture. I know that's very tempting, and it would be much smoother. And I'm not saying we shouldn't hire internal candidates, but I think it's important to look for different perspectives as well and innovative ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We will close the floor and moving on. We have presentations to the board, item 3.1. First up, we have Mike Ritchie from Hazard Young, Atia, and Associates. Mike, thanks for coming out.
Well, thank you for having me. Just give me one second to get organized here and get my clock out, so I don't go over my time. So, yeah, we're Hazard Young, Atia. We're based out of the Chicago, Illinois area. We are a national search firm. We have consultants all over the U.S. I happen to live in Wisconsin. My partner lives in Michigan, and you'll meet her in a second through a video. But just my background real quickly. I've been in education for 39 years, 25 as a superintendent. I've worked for HYA for the past six years, and in my free time, I enjoy any outdoor activity, and I also ump high school baseball. So at this meeting, my partner, who is of state, and when we answer these RFPs, we never know when the board is going to have their presentation. So that's kind of the dilemma here. I'm not sure, do you have it on your screen? Am I going to be able to play that video at all? It's under her name. That loaded up, just a little bit about the firm. It's been in existence for 35 years. We've done over 1,600 searches. We're a national firm. We do about 80 searches per year, and we have 130 associates across the U.S., so we cover almost every state. Like I said, I worked for HYA for the past six years, and then my partner Serena Williams has about 20 years of experience... Serena shivers, has about 20 years of... That was nice. Great. She's going to really appreciate that. Has about 20 years of experience in education across Michigan. There we go. Knowledge, you're right. I'm just going to keep going. If they get it, then we'll just pause and we'll have her do her introduction. But, so why HYA? Couple of things. So basically, HYA, we work for you. We believe every child has the right to a quality education, and the things that we do, we're going to align your new leader with your district and what you want. We work for the board, and we will work tirelessly. We'll, oh, there we go.
But probably what you might be most interested in is that I have roots. Hello, and good evening. My name is Dr. Serena Shivers, and I am a proud member of the HYA search. I am also full-time the Deputy Executive Director for Michigan's Association of Superintendent and Administrators. In addition, I am a former superintendent, where I was superintendent in Michigan for five years. But probably what you might be most interested in is that I have roots in Midland. I grew up in Midland, from the time that I was born until I was in my early years, and my sister and I did Chestnut Hill Elementary. You see, my father was an executive back in the 1970s and 80s with Dow Chemical Company, which is what brought my family to Midland in the very early years of my upbringing. I have very fond memories of growing up in Midland and have stayed connected to the area as I have longtime family friends that are from the area. I look forward to being on this journey with you, and I look forward to bringing my expertise as not only a superintendent, but also one that trains all the new superintendents here in the state of Michigan. And I also, at the national level, work with those that are aspiring to be superintendents from all across the United States. Hopefully, I get a chance to meet you in person if HYA is selected. Again, my name is Dr. Serena Shivers, and I wish you all well in your decision. Thank you.
Yes, Serena Shivers. Okay, so why HYA? So as you can see from the slide, we believe every child is entitled to a great education. It starts with your leader. So we'll make sure we go out and seek the best fit for your district. We'll work, we work for the board. It's your search. We'll customize your search to meet your needs. We'll save you time. I'll talk a little bit about our technical infrastructure that we have, and the board portal is really important. More portal as I go along. We're a firm that you can trust, and according to market research, HYA completes the most searches and has the lowest superintendent turnover rates of any of our competitors. If you look at the right, you'll see the last two years of data of the searches HYA has completed compared to some of our competitors. The other thing is have national partners. A, we have a great partnership with AASA. In fact, we just did their search last year. Executive Director as well. We partner with ALIS, the Administrative and Superintendent Group, and also the National Association of the... Well, National Association of School Superintendents. I happen to serve on the executive committee of that as well. So really big national outreach. Do for... Different thing, phase, the recruitment phase, and then that select phase. So in the engage phase, what we really focus on is understanding that there's... And even like in your RFP, you talked about to, linked and intertwined to the surrounding community. So in that engage phase, we really get out and get to meet the community, and we have, we start with a board planning meeting, and we come up with focus groups. We'll interview all the board members individually, and then we'll ask board who else should interview individually. Maybe you had a 20-year-old or retired teacher that was here for a long time, or a administrator, or a mayor, or a city administrator, chief of police. So we'll ask you who we should go out and interview individually, and then we'll come up with focus groups. We'll do a number of focus groups, anywhere between 12 and 20 focus groups across the community. We'll do community forums, and then we have a online survey. And we take all that data, we put it together, and we create your district leadership report. So that's how we build who we're going to help you hire, based on what your community has in mind as far as what the superintendent... And we do remind them it's the board search, but we like to get that input from the community. As far as our focus groups and how they work, we want to make sure we involve as many people as possible. So the first thing we do is we'll do a combination of in-person meetings and Zoom meetings. Prior to COVID, it was all in-person. COVID hits, it was all Zoom, and what we found, great attendance with Zoom meetings. And so we do a blended model. So we'll do in-person and we'll do Zoom as well. Flexible meeting times. We'll do a morning, noon, evening. We found for parents, if we do a Zoom meeting for parents, Sunday night, 7 o'clock. Great time to do a Zoom meeting for parents, because they're usually home at that time. We want maximum participation. Diverse groups will go out to your community. We'll go to where they are. So as an example, if there's a language barrier, we'll go, and if they have a center, we'll go to their center, because they're... They're in a familiar area versus coming into a school. So we'll really get out and do an outreach to include everyone. And you can kind of see on the left, we give you some ideas of what groups we will do focus groups with. So you've got your certified staff, your support staff, parents, business people, business leaders, civic groups, booster clubs, PTOs, arts groups, and anyone else at the board thinks that we should interview. But the one group we do insist on interviewing is high school students. We really get in, we get into the high schools, and you already have a student advisory team. So I'll give your current superintendent credit for putting that team together. Students have a voice, and they need to have a voice across the school. So I just want to quickly share two comments. These are actually... So I led a couple of searches here recently. One was in Lincoln, Nebraska, and this is what the student said. "The new superintendent needs to have good taste in music." So we know they have good taste in decisions. "Still hopeful that the next continue the legacy of superintendents, be willing to listen to students, gain input from students, and be open-minded to change." High school student said that. One other quick quote, "You could hire an old superintendent." They just want to see the superintendent with a sense of humor and aged and present. Again, high school students. So they really have an idea of what's, you know, what's going on. So that report becomes a great roadmap for your district and for the new superintendent, and that way, you know what the community and students, how they feel. So then we'll move on to our recruit phase, and then in that recruit phase... What we... I'm going to back it up, so you can see that. So the recruit phase, we will focus on... And one of the things that we do is we recruit superintendents. And so about 75% of the superintendents that we place are recruited by HYA. 90% of our associates across the U.S. are retired superintendents. We have our website, about 5,000 views per week on our website, and also our newsletter goes out to 22,000 subscribers. We'll do marketing tools, flyers, recruitment packages. We are represented at state and national conventions as well. So that network is really important to us to go out and recruit. As we move into that select phase, we screen every single applicant, and we give them a 20- to 40-minute interview to get to know them a little bit better and to feel for them. We also will present you a tiered slate. So what that means is, as we get all these applicants that come in, we're going to put them in tier one, tier two, and tier three. Tier one are going to be the strongest of the candidates. They're going to match your profile report. They're going to be something that your district would be very satisfied with if that person became superintendent. Tier two, not quite as strong as tier one. Maybe we found something in their background. Maybe they had a negative situation somewhere, so they're not quite that tier one. And then tier three... All you want to interview tier three. You will see every single application as they come across your board portal. And so that's kind of how we work our bill. And then we give the finalists a day in the district, and so we set that up. They're going to spend a full day in your district. They'll do a lot of meet and greets. Again, they'll meet with students, they'll meet with staff, they'll meet with parents, they'll meet with business leaders, and meet and greets. And then those meet, the people that are in the audience or the attendance, they're going to have a chance to give some feedback. And so we have a QR code. It goes to a link where we ask two questions. What strengths would this individual bring to your district? And then what would concern you if this individual were hired? And that, those responses go immediately to the board. So you'll see all those responses as to how those individuals feel about those top three candidates. And then we facilitate that third-party background check, where we, a very comprehensive background check on your finalist. So that's kind of our, our select phase. Go through the process. We, I talked a little bit about the board. What's the board portal? The board portal, think of it as your own webpage, where you're going to have access to all of our information. You will see every application as they come in, they're downloaded, one click, and you'll see, if a resume is 30 pages, if the application process is 30 pages, you will see all 30 pages in one click. So you'll see every applicant, schedules will be in there, focus group schedules will be in there, interview schedule, tier one, tier two, tier three. So all of our material, we put location. That way, you don't have to keep searching for emails. You can just have one link and 24/7 access to that as well. It's very popular with, with school boards. So just a little bit about some of our past Michigan experiences. You can see we've done a number of searches in Michigan, and actually, you'll see Midland there. I believe we did Midland in 1999, if I went back and looked. And so HYA did that search in 99. Again, that distinct advantage, and we talked a lot about those things, you know, with Serena being, having about 20 years of experience. The one thing, I worked for HYA for six years. I've done more research, I think 35, but I'm up to, close to 30. Every one of the superintendents that I have placed has... Current position. It's actually engagement piece. It comes back to the best fit, the best match for the district. Our recruiting advantage, you know, again, 75% of the people that we place have been recruited, and work across the nation is very large. And I'm just about wrapped up here. I wanted to show you this slide. So this gives you an idea. I'm not going to go through all six scenarios. You have them in front of you. This just gives you an idea. These are six searches that I have led. And see, so you can see that they had applicants, 18 from out of state, for 80 percent. And then those bullet points, those are the people we slay. So one, that they had, we brought them six for Lincoln, Nebraska, and then you can see the places they came from. Littleton, Colorado had a very, very strong slate. They had 11 in tier one, and you can see the states. And then they actually had 12 in tier one. So then we work with the board to narrow that down to six or eight, because you certainly don't want to interview 12 people. You want to keep that to either six or eight individuals as well. And then we have our analytics. We, our back office, our technology, we believe in analytics. Our sports team, analytics is a big deal. And if we search, we can see who's looking at... Computers, and we have all that back office data. And then we have a timeline where, this is your timeline. This is your planning meeting. We'll start backwards. When do you want to announce superintendent to the public? We work backwards from there as far as what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. We put this on your website, again, the transparency. It's important that your community understand and notes, and it's really important for you as the board to get those dates in your calendar, because there are a number of interviews, timelines, you know, so that you're going to want to have all of that organized as you go throughout the search process. Few testimonials that we had from some of the searches that I've led as well. And then why Midland? Why is this going to draw... We've got a great district. Your website's phenomenal. Your test scores are great. Looking at, you know, the things that you have, when you rank your... Against districts across Michigan and the nation, very strong. And then just some of the things that would draw people here, the location, the activities, what you have available, just a great place to live, Midwest values. It's going to be, it's going to be a great draw for your, for someone to go after this job. So I'm very confident we'll get a number of applications, and we will call sitting superintendents and we'll recruit, and we will bring you a great slate if we are selected. There's my 15 minutes. I went a little bit over. We had some technology issues. I apologize.
That's all right. Thanks, Mike. I've got a couple of questions for you. First of all, thank you for the presentation and doing your homework about Midland with all the data you just presented. Going back to the board portal slide, I had a question about the transition services available. Are, is, do those come at an extra fee?
Yes. Well, yes and no. So what, what comes with the transition fee is we'll have a, we'll have a closing meeting with the new superintendent and the board, and we'll take that report I talked about. That report is going to be about 20 to 30 pages, and we will go through it page by page with the new superintendent. And if that person wants to be successful, if they follow that report based on what your community wants and the needs, they'll, they will be successful. So we go through that report with them, and then HYA will give you the dashboard for six months for free. Dashboard is, is it allows your new superintendent to set goals, benchmarks, and expectations, and be able to follow those as they go, and then they can customize, add anything to it as they go forward. It's a great product that HYA has. They also have board governance, coaching, mentoring. That is all extra if you go for that. We don't even talk about that until after the person's hired.
Okay, two more, and then I will pass the floor. As far as when you're filtering your candidates, is that process videotaped so that the board could watch some of the interviews that they so desired through the board portal?
We don't video that, because we want to remove all biases from the board, for one thing. But what, you will see every single application as they come in. It takes, we have a couple assistants that work with us. It literally takes them about, once we hit an application, they get an email, they download it immediately. So as they come in, you will see the entire packet. So you won't have to wait a week or two weeks to see the applications. And I tell every board, usually the election's open for six weeks. That's, that's the norm. Some are four, some are eight. Six weeks, all the applications come in, the majority of the applications come in towards the end. Okay? They want it confidential. They don't want their current board to know. They apply at the end. Anything that will sabotage a search is if those names leak out. So we talk in that planning meeting, we talk about confidentiality. So we have to be really careful that we don't leak those names out.
Okay. Next one. I know you've worked with a lot of boards in your tenure, some very exciting superintendent searches, some not.
Yep.
Our board, I think, all of the members except for me, this is a brand-new process to them. So how will you interact with our board, who is... Kind of, we may need some hand-holding.
Trust the process. We will, we will be with you every step of the way. We're here when you want us to be. We communicate on a daily basis. We update that portal. We put weekly updates in there. You have our cell phones, you have our emails. You call us seven days in a week. We will, we will respond immediately to your phone calls and to your emails. And I think the planning, that can take anywhere from an hour to two hours, and I think once you have that, you have a really good understanding of the process and how that process works. But we spent a lot of time with members who have never hired a superintendent. It's common.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I have for you.
Thanks for coming in, Mike.
Couple of questions. First, on the day in the district, I always say it sounds like a really. Questions I had was, how do you advise board to reach out to. Candidate district and current district at a certain point in the process?
So typically we do the reference checks, but once you get down to finalist, it's fair game. So once those names become public, you can certainly call anyone you want, even people they don't list. And we do, I didn't mention it, but we do blind reference checks as well. Obviously if they list them, they get a recommendation, we know that. If you have a sitting superintendent and they don't list their board president as a reference, huge red flag to us. If you have a principal, they don't list the superintendent, huge red flag. And then so we'll dig and dig and dig. And we'll call those people even if they don't list them, if they become finalist. But after, after you have your finalist, if you want to reach out to any of their references or call people, that's, that's fair game as, as well.
Great. And then. Really appreciate. The engagement. It's extremely important. How, how do we make sure that we have a broad slate for community input? Whether it's staff or students? I know you've mentioned students already, but staff and.
Depending on the size of the district. So we work very closely in every district, every search, very close, very closely with the administrative assistant. We work very closely with any PR, public relations person you might have in your district. And we use social media. It's very easy to email students, staff, and parents because you have a communication system. That's easy. Harder reach, it's the people who don't have students in school. And so for those people, you have to kind of target events and activities and put some stuff out on social media. So we try to do that as well. Again, we're going to rely on some of your office people to really help us get that word out and. Overcommunicate is, is where I'm going. Some districts. A bulk postcard to your residents, just saying, these are the focus groups, here's what's going on. That tends to hit them. A lot of people like getting that mail. It comes in the mail. They access it on social media. So we, we brainstorm and we, we overcommunicate. The six ones I listed?
Yeah.
Those were just six of my recent searches. There's no rhyme or reason why those are, those are listed. Yeah, so like I said, I did almost thirty searches and those are, those are some of the most recent ones. And you, you can kind of see a pattern. So I didn't pick and choose. If you look at all of our searches, you're going to see pretty much the same numbers. I mean, maybe not in the districts that are. And say, HYA, we have done searches with school districts under a hundred kids. It was a. School in Montana to over six hundred and forty thousand kids. That was Los Angeles. Okay? So in between. So if we take those real small districts of four, five, six hundred students, you won't get the out of state applicants for those districts. But once you start hitting that five, six, seven, eight thousand, that's when you tend to start getting more out of state applicants. And with our reach, as I said, a hundred and thirty associates across not every state, but almost every state, we reached out to them. And I can see every applicant from every job HYA does. So I can go into our software system. And so if they slate six for a job I'm not doing, one person is going to get that job. So now we have five other finalists from that district. And if I think it's a good match, I'm going to reach out to that, one of those five. So that's kind of how we network with each other.
Jen, Brett?
Mike, for coming. I wanted a little bit more historical data. Tier recommendations.
Okay.
In your thirty searches, roughly, how many of those thirty searches were tier one candidates or tier two or tier three?
So in every search, you're going to have a tier two, tier three?
Yep. Ultimate person that was picked by all thirty of these searches in these thirty different districts were they?
How many were tier one?
Yep.
All of them. Yeah, all of them were tier one. And we tell the board that you can move anyone you want around. Once we present those, it's called the slate. If you say this person's in tier two, but they should be in tier one, their resume is great. I might say they have a great resume, but here's what we found. And then we share that information with you. That's why we put them in tier two.
Okay.
And so, and then the tier threes, we're going to tell you why they're not going to be a good fit in Midland. The tier ones, you're going to have. One search I did, we had to go tier one A and tier two, tier one A and tier one B because we had such a strong slate. And we had like six that were so good. And then we had four or five that were just under them. So we actually helped rank them for the board. But again, you interview anyone you, we don't tell you who you're going to interview. You pick the six or eight or ten people you want to interview. We just advise you of what we found. So again, you, you, this is your.
Okay. Last question. We have the weeks of your whole timeline that you laid out. When is Dr. Ritchie and Dr. Shivers here personally?
So we will be here with the price we gave you, that includes four days in the district. So we'll be here four days. However, you can contract this if you would like to. And the other thing, we've gone over a lot of those days on my searches for no extra cost because it was a, it's close to me. And like I said, Serena's here. So if she has to come for an extra time or two, she's so close, it's, it's probably not going to matter. But if you want us here, we will be here. So typically, we are here for two full days for the focus groups. And then some boards, back to your inexperience with some board members. Some board members want one of us here. When you do the round of six, they want us here for that. Because that seems to be the one that is a little bit harder to get that six down to three. And so typically, we would be here for that if you would like us to. And then, and some actually want us here for the final interview as well. Typically, we will not be here for the day in the district, but we organize that and we plan that. So the day in the district, so we're, there's going to be a bunch of tours within the school. So we work with a lead person from your district. Your principals will lead that tour of their building. Because these candidates, they're going to ask them all kinds of instructional questions about, you know, data, testing, class offerings. So the principals are the best people. And that's, that's, that's actually another interview as well. Because then you can talk to your principals and say, hey. Three finalists. But so we'll, so we don't normally come for the day in the district. And it's three long days. And the board, you'll have very little to do with the day in the district. That's really more about the meet and greets and about the principals leading tours. And then some type of community historian giving them a tour of the area. And a lot of times that. Member, retired board member, retired administrator, retired, retired staff member, someone who really knows the area well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So obviously it's. That will be working with us specifically. There's a lot of tech, a lot of other stuff going on behind the scenes. Associates.
Yep.
Is that like, like, is that how you do like outsourcing or is it?
So I will be your two lead people will be here. We also will use other associates if needed. Because like I said, we have, we have a bunch of them. So if we do need someone else to assist, we will. But normally, our typical searches is done with two associates. So we have a lead and then an assistant. I would be the lead. Serena's the assistant. Work hand in hand together. We split the duties evenly. We'll be here when we need to be here and we'll do a phenomenal job for you. I actually have two assistants that do all the stuff that you've seen. And they do a lot of the scheduling and work and just getting everything super, super organized. HYA has seven back office people. And every search is assigned a project manager. And so that project manager is back in the home office, getting the contract in order, getting everything, the billing, the, just making sure we don't miss a piece of, of the search. And then our president is very involved as well. So Max is very involved. And I talked to him on the way here. So he's, he's hands on.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Mike, thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for presentation to the board is the Michigan Association of. Good evening. Good, how are you?
Okay, thanks so much.
Thanks for joining us. Yeah, to get a minute, get your stuff set up. It's okay.
Yeah. No, I think, I think we're good to go. So I'm Greg Shespatowski. I'm the director of leadership development and executive search services for the Michigan Association of School Boards. I oversee the entire team that does all of our executive search services for the state of Michigan. Searches in the state of Michigan than anybody. Years as director, we've done anywhere between nineteen and twenty-five in the state of Michigan at any given year. So I'd like to go through some highlights of our. We've given you. I know we only have a short. Minute of questions you'd like to ask. We are your. Education. This is the only reason we exist is to serve you for good outcomes so that you can have great outcomes for kids. We provide unparalleled support. Here in Michigan, I live twenty-six miles away in Mount Plum. Search consultant access to me is no problem at all. We have twenty-eight folks on staff and we can let our full communications team, our two legal staff. And in addition to the eight folks on my team, as well as our twenty-ish consultants that are out and doing this work. Leverage to help you with this search. Track record, we've done over seven hundred searches in the state of Michigan since MASP started this work. We've got a national network for promotion of your posting and for connections to do of candidates. And we have really good relationships with the other association, the education associations in the state. Not only do we are building with three other of those associations, we're also at the. So conferences, talking with their members, meeting with folks, seeing who is looking for that next opportunity, who's looking to move into the superintendency? Or what superintendents are looking for a new move and looking for a new opportunity? And then we emphasize a high degree of process transparency. We really do believe in this process unfolding in public. In matter of course, also in, in compliance with the Open Meetings Act and making sure that your public understands every step of the way what's going on. And. You, everything above board throughout the whole process. Again, we, we are only here to serve boards of education. We don't try to play, we don't have a pool of candidates. We're trying to place. We are not running a leadership academy where we're trying to make our numbers look great, anything like. We serve boards of education. We definitely want to make sure that you find the right candidate for your posting. And we really want to focus on getting someone who'd be here for the long term, which I'm sure you don't want to be doing this every three to five years either. We have no obligation to place any candidates. And we're always mindful of doing things that are going to reflect well. District and well on the board and, and creating experience for the candidates that are coming to visit with you as well. So we're ever mindful of those laws that are like the OMA and making sure that public perception is always front of mind through the whole process. One of the other things that we are really proud of is the amount of stakeholder engagement we involve in the process as well. Getting you as much information as you can to help inform your thinking so that when it comes time, you feel like you have all the information you need to make a great decision. So we have an online survey, which is anonymous, which can be put out to your community very quickly. Right now, we have a number of languages available and we can add more languages. As we know, many communities in the state of Michigan have a lot of language needs. And wanting to reach as many in your community as we can, making sure that they can access that survey as well. So right now, we have English, Spanish, Arabic. We do have other languages available. I think there's one that's missing off that list that I can't come up with right now. But we can get that translated for you into whatever you might need. We will also do face to face and virtual focus groups. They make a point of doing these at various times throughout the day to not only accommodate folks that work different shifts that can't make, you know, random business day hours. Or, and then making sure that we have virtual options as well for folks who have childcare needs or anything like that, that can't attend or can only pop on a Zoom. Making sure that we have different time slots for everybody to attend. So everybody has an opportunity that wants to be engaged in the process. We'll make sure that in the room during the interviews, that the folks that are attending have the opportunity to provide you written feedback on the candidates. Boards tend to find this very valuable as. May observe something that you missed or may interpret something a little bit differently than you. Again, all helping to inform your thinking and involving your community in the process as well. So we'll make sure that the board gets all of those before any decisions or deliberations are done. Make sure that there are candidate open houses so that your staff and your community can come in and meet the candidates on that final interview day, shake their hand, introduce themselves, ask them a couple of questions before the interviews start. And then anything they look throughout that day could be put in those feedback forms that night at the. We will be in state and. Marketization. Our revelous application platform automatically posts to. Other states that are also using the application. That's included, that's free of charge, that's just part of our system. So there's thirteen other states that use it. So as we post it live on ours, when their candidates log into their state system, they automatically will see your. Is connected to the National Association of Superintendent Searchers. So all of what we do and the other state associations across the country, we all meet a couple of times a year. And then we. Once a month virtually to talk about our practice, compare notes. But we also can call each other and ask about candidates. Have you done any of your searches? Are there any flags? What would, what, have you seen this individual interview? What can you tell me about them? So really for me to call folks in Texas, Illinois, Oklahoma, we've got lots of references to call that don't necessarily have to be given by a candidate. And we can just call and make those discreet. Questions answered ahead of time. We'll also be having phone calls with all of your applicants, making sure that we've talked to every candidate and kind of understand their story. So that when you're reviewing their resumes and applications, if you have questions, like if there's a strange transition or a gap in years or something like that, we've already talked to the candidate. We'll be able to answer that question for you so that we can move the process along and you're not wondering in those moments. And then of course, like I said, we have those MASP consultants that are all over the state, working with boards of ed, doing superintendent searches. So if there's any reference checking, if there's any recruiting that needs to be done, I can always leverage all of those folks and the knowledge that they have about who's out there looking for a job. We'll make sure that in the interview process that we are facilitating that candidate selection process with you, helping you walk through that discussion as you're winnowing down the pool to decide who you'd like to interview. Again, making sure everything's compliant with OMA and everything's done in public. And then you will receive all information and all the application materials from every candidate. We do not believe in hiding. Firmly believe this is a decision and that you will see everything that comes in and it is your choice which candidates you'd like to move forward. So we absolutely make sure you see everything that comes in and that is completed. We'll have two rounds of interviews. They'll all be in open session like we've already talked about. We will recommend, so we will form a tier based on your selection criteria to help you select candidates. But once we get to the interview, we will also help you determine which questions to ask. So we are very. Full of asking behavioral questions, making sure that we're asking, what have you done? What would you do in a future that doesn't exist? Right? Because I can be amazing when I. Right? Because I could be amazing when I don't have to back it up. If I can just tell you a story about something incredible that I might do in the future. Right? So lots of behavioral questions. We're going to ultimately, it's your question guide, there'll be your questions, but we will print you up a guide, we'll make sure it's scripted so nobody's wondering, everybody's on the same page. It's a real smooth process, trying to remove any stress that that might create out of the process. We've already said how the audience will have a chance to provide written feedback after those interviews. And then of course poor district, making sure all logistics are handled, candidates are handled, are greeted and handled well. Locations, all of that is taken care of, meetings are posted. Any press releases, anything like that, we'll always draft that and make sure that it's as easy as possible for the district to get that communication out. And then of course, we are your association, so we don't go away. We will always be here for ongoing support, questions. We also have a successful superintendent transition workshop that is success. Your new superintendent is on ground for about two months, maybe that two to three month mark, we'll come back in, do a workshop with the board and the new superintendent, make sure everybody's on the same page and off to the right, a really good start. And then of course, any calls, emails or additional support that the board or the superintendent might need going forward, we would be happy to support you in that. Want to be available for any questions you might have about our process or the proposal?
Sure. Would you say something, John? Go ahead.
Question, the Revellis database only gets
Yeah, right now, there are thirteen other states that are using that system. Obviously, that's not the only way we would, we would market your posting. But I'm just saying that it's just automatic. When we put it in our database, that's where it goes. So we have about, we have about thirty-five folks that are pretty actively showing up in the group. But I think we have close to about forty that are in, in the association. Yeah, yeah. So we're probably in, I would say that we could probably cast a really good net, easily get ahold of folks in thirty-five states.
Greg, how boards who are not as experienced in undergoing a superintendent search process?
Sure. So what I like to do is make sure that, number one, that I'm available for phone calls from any board member. I, I make sure that everybody has their questions answered ahead of time, that we can handle as much as we can ahead of time. And then when those questions come in, communicating those answers back to the whole board, so everybody's on the same page. Throughout the process, I'll make sure that anything that I talk about the room in a meeting and a training as we're getting ready for this, any workshops that we do, I will send you a recap email, like here's what we talked about. Here are our next steps. As we're coming into candidate selection, interviews, whatever it might be, you will always get a step-by mail from me laying out the process, step by step by step by step. Exactly what you can expect right down to, here's what this will sound like when I ask you a question. You know, I'll say, John, who are the six candidates you would like to invite for interview? And I mean, I will script that out in an email so you can see exactly what that language would sound like, exactly what the questions for me are going to sound like to prepare you as best as we can. I've already talked about the interview guides, scripted language for the president and going through so that there's no trying to so really trying to leave no stone unturned, making sure again that we're available for any questions along the way. But we'll have preparation workshops for you, we'll have candidate selection workshops. I'm there for every step of the way. I'll be here for the stakeholder input sessions, I'll be here for all interviews. You know, anything I can do to walk side by side with you through the whole process, I'll be doing it.
Thank you.
Just two questions. So Greg, in your response, you list Jay as well. Is that two-member team or would there be others involved in addition to you?
Well, so Jay's assistant director, he's, he's like my right hand. So I will have access to Jay throughout your entire I will be your primary search consultant. You are the only search I will do. I will not be working on any other search. I won't be doing any other work. This is it. So whether that means we're missing any other searches that I could be doing, that's fine. But I will commit to you that I will not be working on any other searches than yours.
And then I thought it was really unique to the feedback forms from the public during the interview process. Can you give us a little bit more information on how that process works and what kind of specific feedback you're seeking from the public during that process?
Yeah, so we try to keep it as, as open-ended as possible for folks that are here. We definitely try, however, I don't know if you folks plan on streaming and, and that sort of thing. We've done online forms as well. Have that conversation, how you'd like that to work. Basically, what it is, is we ask, we ask folks that listen to the interview, what were the strengths that you saw on this candidate? And then what questions do you have? What do you, eye wonders do you have as well? And then we leave it up to the folks in the room to write as much or as little as they would like. They have the opportunity to put their name down if they want to, they don't have to. And then we'll make copies for all of you so everybody can see every feedback form that came in. Jay, yeah, John, I think you had a question. Yes, sir.
You're committing to only work on ours?
Only, yes.
You have enough people that they're going to cover the other eighteen to thirty?
I do. Do, yeah. We, we've, we've probably got about twelve folks that work real heavy for us out in the state. I've got one full-time staff, Jay Bennett, that works for me. He's, he's timed, the rest of the folks are superintendents or retired board members that are doing it on a contract basis. Yeah.
You can commit just to us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Greg, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
How are we going to leverage technology to have all of our information in one spot because you're going to have a ton of resumes coming across. We have, this whole process is hundreds and hundreds of pages of documents that's going to flow. How are we all staying together?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. You're right, it will be hundreds of pages of documentation to go through. So you will gain, once your posting closes, you will get access to our applicant tracking system. So you will see a bit of information that our applicants, that your applicants you will have your own login and you will be able to view everything from the application to any files they've uploaded, their transcripts, reference letters, all of it will be in one place for you. So everybody will have their own individual login. It's a two-step process to get that set up and it's just based on your email that is in our system with MASP.
So do they hit that the, the second they come in?
No. So what will happen is we'll, we'll collect everything throughout the process on the closing of your sting, that will shut down, no more applications will come. I will take a look at your entire applicant pool and then I will generate a tier for you with a master list of candidates saying, here are the folks that most closely matched the criteria that you've said was important to you. And then here's a second tier. I will provide that in a cover memo for you and you will get that along with the access to the system to see all the materials.
Okay. Have you ever hired or recommended someone for a superintendent role that was outside the education career path?
Uh, no, I have not. I have not seen that in my four years yet.
Okay.
We have not. I, I know we've had a few applicants along the way, but we have not seen one hired.
Okay.
Not one of mine, not one of mine, but, but we have had, I think, two in my time that have interviewed that have been outside of the traditional educational path. We've had a number of folks that have not been teachers in the classroom. You know, that, that's pretty common that we've had folks that have penetration but have been traditional school folks from that point in their career. But a, but it says someone coming from industry or corporate or something like that. That's just, it just hasn't happened. Not that it can't, not that we're against it, it just hasn't.
Okay.
Jen? Any questions? Okay. Greg, thank you so much for coming in tonight.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you so much. Appreciate the invitation.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, I'm a big fan of the association. Well, they're, they're coming in virtually. Are they good?
Probably, we're probably a little ahead of them. Why don't we, could we take a
Yeah, let's take, let's take, take five minutes.
David, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
When you were, when you were touching the screen, the
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Right, next up, we have Ray and Associates, lady and gentleman.
Awesome, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
David, I need to be able to share my screen if possible unless you guys have the presentation.
We do have a presentation.
Okay. So do you want to run it from there? Sure. Okay. Perfect.
So just Sheila and David with us?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Thanks for joining.
Are you able to see your
Absolutely. Are you able to see your
You, um
Still working on that part.
Work in progress.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. First of all, thank you for having us this evening and let me go through some introductions in a second. We're honored to be here tonight to work with you as you embark on the most important task you have as a board of trustees. And so we're honored to be invited here this evening and hopefully the information we share with you tonight. I'll introduce you to, let her introduce herself to you. Sheila, go ahead.
Thank you, David, and
Thank you, David, and
Thank you, David, and, uh, as David said, good evening, board members. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Um, we really appreciate the opportunity to share with you our superintendent search process. As David mentioned, I'm Sheila Alice. I live in Northville, Michigan, so I am your Michigan connection. Um, as a regional associate, I bring to the work that I do with Ray and Associates forty-seven years of, of work in the public field of public education. Um, I spent twenty-one years in the Lumet Camp Community Schools. I was district chairman coordinator and curriculum director. I then moved to the Lumet Public Schools for twenty years. I was the elementary principal, director of elementary schools, director of academic services, and then chief academic officer. The last five years of my tenure, I spent at the Michigan Department of Education. I was the chief deputy superintendent, and then I was the interim state superintendent of schools. Additionally, um, additionally, I have been an adjunct professor of literacy instruction at both the graduate and undergraduate level, um, at Madonna University in Lumet. I've served on the board of directors for various national and state professional education organizations and civic organizations. And I have been retired from public education for just over two years. So David, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Sheila. My name is David Falters, and I am a managing director for Ray and Associates. I've been with the firm about three years. Also am a team member and background investigator. I am also a retired school superintendent. Uh, was superintendent for eighteen years in Texas, fifteen of those in a town, South Lake Carroll, which is very similar, uh, if you speak in demographic. I feel at home visiting you guys. Uh, and again, now that I've, I've been retired, I do this for the most part, and I'm also a financial advisor to a couple of dozen, dozen school districts around the state of Texas. Uh, but enjoy kind of pouring back in and helping you guys as we go through the process. You know, my Michigan connections are my wife. I'll be there this weekend. Ray has her high school reunion there. And Tram, it's a college reunion, being in Arba for a couple of days, so any chance I get to get back to Michigan. My wife loves it and I enjoy it, so again, thank you for allowing us to be. The other team members that I'll introduce to you, again, you may not, if you don't have the presentation up, I'm sure you'll get a copy. Uh, another team member is Kathy Schoenfelder. She's a vice president for Ray and Associates. She is a full-time staff member. We have three full-time staff members in Iowa. Kathy is our data person. She'll be providing you access to documents or information that you may need. She'll be a great contact person for your district folks, and she's just a. Then we also have Thomas Ahart, who's a regional search associate. Uh, Thomas was recently superintendent in Des Moines Public Schools, recently retired, was a teacher principal there, uh, and so we're thrilled to have him as part of the team.
We'll, we'll talk about this in a little bit, but, uh, a little more about Ray and Associates and kind of who we are. We are a national search firm. We have about, um, about forty regional search associates around the country from Midwest to Southwest to Northeast who all kind of pitch in when we begin a search or when we part with you to kind of get the word out that, uh, you know, that middle, middle, middle public schools is looking for their next super leader. We have, our firm has been in the business since nineteen seventy-five, with placement sixteen hundred superintendents nationally. Uh, we're a woman-owned educational executive leadership search, and we do only educational leadership service search. Some of the firms, uh, kind of dive into other types of educational leadership programs, so we strictly on education.
But we'll talk a little bit about our, about our process with you. We need you over and over again, hopefully just repeat over and over again, hopefully, and we have processes where we have things that we've done this process for years. We still understand each other's needs, so we're happy to do that. Uh, we're going to work together.
Uh, we're going to work together.
Questions of you. We'll ask questions of us. We'll ask questions of us. We're going to listen fully. We're going to listen fully. I'm going to let, Sheila, I'm going to let, uh,
Sheila, talk a little bit about our candidates and candidates here.
Okay, thank you, David. Okay, thank you, David. Ray and Associates, we really value the connections that we have with the candidates that are in our pool. We care of them and really develop wonderful relationships with them. We want to continue to meet this goal, so to accomplish that. So to accomplish that, we have built and we continue to maintain a database. Relationships, relationships to recruit administrative candidates. We maintain an extensive database of more than six thousand school administrators. Michigan administrators as well as administrators from throughout the United States. We average almost thirty thousand unique monthly visits to our website. We develop relationships and maintain individual contacts with the largest administrative pool. And these unique connections and every, two thirds of our placements come from outside of our registered candidates. You heard David say that this is your search. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what input in the search process. We're here to use our expertise to help you along the way. We're going to help you to create timeline, that's going to mean your specifications, your needs, your expectations, and it's going to coordinate with your district calendar. We're going to gather input from you on the qualities that you want in your next superintendent. In a minute, David's going to tell you more information about the process that we use for this purpose. And we're going to engage in one-on-one interviews with each school board member. A member of our team, in some cases it might be me, going to ask you a series of questions about the district and about the skills and the attributes that you are looking for in your next superintendent. And then we're going to help you create a conversation package, and that conversation package is both going to be attractive and it's going to be competitive. And David, I'll turn it back to you.
That's all part of building, that's all part of building, that's all part of building. As we start to get applications, then the goal would be to have a profile of each your names, that's your requirements, in a way that will build it up. Sheila mentioned, we start with the board members, Kathy, some, you contact. It's about a forty-five minute process. Just to get your field, to develop this, kind of theme, as we develop this profile. Then we will work with you, then we will work with you, for how many stakeholders we like to have. Uh, we, I think, uh, we work from five, eight, I've been in searches for, I've been in searches where the board would come up, where the board would come up stakeholders, which is important. Your teachers, your administrators. Your classified staff, your non-classified staff. Ministers, your road reefer, elected officials in the area. And we will lead with those stakeholders, we'll do it in person, we'll do it virtually, we'll do it virtually. You decide, what your line decides. The other thing that we, that I think, that I think is, we provide a survey, that we believe needs to be sent to all of these states. To all of these, all of these surveys. A pretty simple survey, that it's very high, where we ask all the stakeholders, what they're looking for, what type of qualities they're looking for. We provide that information back to you. A lot of these, a lot of these. There's more fields, so you have more fields, like your officials field, like your field, a lot of times there's a field. There's a few, a lot of them. Then we take all of that. And we take, we develop those profiles. Then we start to root, uh, we will work with you. You, you take association boards, and make recommendations, and make recommendations that we feel like are valuable, and some that may be pricey or non pricey. And we talk a little bit about the value of those, but obviously we have a website, we send, uh, information after our, information after your social services, make live searches known. Here's your job, here's your profile, here's what you're looking for, whether that's, uh, Facebook or however, uh, you like to do, and you. We also have some recommendations, of course, how we like to do that. We're going to address, we're going to address your position, top you can, both, at the pass of those throats. And then again, that, that nationwide, that's very, very valuable. It's very, very valuable. Uh, and then, from there, I'll let you, I'll let you talk a little bit about how to screen those candidates.
Great, thank you, David. Great, thank you, David. So let me talk a little bit, as David said, about how we screen candidates, and that's how that's our process, to make sure that we are bringing to you the very best pool of candidates. So once the superintendent position closes, the posting closes, our background team, they really get to work, and they extensive and thorough screening of each candidate, so that we create for you a slate of the very best candidates. Our screening process, our banking process, includes three different levels. So first, we begin by doing the candidate application package. So we go over their resume, their power letter, we also assess each candidate's ability to meet the qualities in the profile that the board. Are those candidates that meet those qualities, and we do a deeper dive into their background. Ah, and there's our PowerPoint. Ah, and there's our PowerPoint. Um, if we put it there to ten, that would be great. Ten, that would be great. There, uh, One? Back one? There we go. Candidate pool, that's where we are. Thank you. Candidate pool, that's where we are. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So as I was saying, once we get through the first level, and then we do a deeper dive into, we do that check, a comprehensive check of their history. We're going to call references that they have. We're going to contact, uh, state, uh, state leadership organization. We're going to contact national leadership organization. We're going to do a search of their work for social media, so we're going to look at, 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 we're going to look at Twitter. Get LinkedIn and also on TikTok. Then for the very select few candidates, we're going to begin the third level. We're going to begin. Third, we're going to start looking to see if there's any criminal activity, if there's any offender identification. We're going to look at motor vehicle records and other things. As well as we're going to verify the candidate's professional experience. This third level of screening, that is conducted by an external professional organization, and that is at no charge to the district. So after we finish these three levels, the vetting process, we're going to bring to you, to the board, a slate of the very, very best candidates from your consideration. If we want to ensure that we bring to you not have any surprises. So David, back. So back to you.
And as, as Sheila said, then, we'll bring those top candidates, we'll bring those, we do this, we should be, we should be original, but I'm going to provide one way to you, we provide us candidates, a couple of questions. And maybe questions that, you know, we share with you, so that you know, who just you know, if they are, for how they present themselves. Uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of people will be looking for that right bit. All candidates, all qualified candidates, if you look all the time. And then we'll help you get that process of evaluating, yeah. And then we'll work with you as you go through your process, census process, we'll put you on, so that you hopefully those top candidates will last in the top. And we'll help, uh, work with you, make take their reach, and census, uh, when it comes time to talk about seven, five rounds, five rounds. Uh, and then we'll give you access to their information, if you access the information. Again, if you're certain, again, if we're totally uncertain. And then we'll work with you on finalizing some of these finalizing questions, or some things that they work with, and they should send all your answers off. Organize and arrange those.
Organize and arrange those.
These are just a couple of pullout quotes, examples, and we make our statements from there, and we make some get from there. As far as helping you. And you probably have a great idea.
And you probably have a great idea.
They're presented there tonight, because you may not know what your official government, what your teaching staff looks for, what your students are looking for. And so those are great opportunities for you to be able to do that. And this is just an overview, just an overview of what those search forms out there, you'll see them for essentially.
Search and engagement, provide, there's someone always there, who can answer your back to call.
We're still paid always, we're still paid always, and when you leave them. Which will, in person, one of those servers will be there in staff. We believe our outreach, we believe our outreach around the country is robust, and we bet that, uh, website is well-known.
Website is well-known.
And we use the website all the time. Background checks, we talked about.
Background checks, we talked about.
Not only the social media, but obviously there's no site, you don't want surprises, you don't want surprises. Uh, and there may be things after, while there may be some headlines after, what do you think about this? Some headlines, it may not work for you guys, but some of you might say, you know what?
Some of you might say, you know what? All the way through the whole process.
And so with that, uh, fifteen minutes, then you'll be able to turn that to you.
Okay. Sheila, since your base to Michigan, would you be our primary contact point?
The primary contact point is David. David, you can call there anytime.
Okay.
I'll hopefully hear your call.
Uh, just a general question for both of you. Uh, how do you work with boards who are as experienced in going through the superintendent search process?
Your luck.
And I'll, and Sheila, her experience is that I
We both have worked with boards for a long time. And, uh, our branch papers, the T P, so I think we've spent a lot of time.
I think we've spent a lot of time. You'll have a cell phone, if there's questions that come along, if there's questions that come along, you welcome to text or call. Text or call.
I'm fortunately kind of twenty-two seven.
Kind of twenty-two seven guy.
What kind of system? We want this to be a great. As Sheila said, we do, and the other search firms we hired, we was with. And so our goal was to guide you, to signal, to have, to ask that question, to get an answer.
Ask that question, get a response.
We'll go through this process. We also know you all have jobs, you have lives. As well outside of the, of the, of the district. So we want to do as much, like, we're going to do as much coaching, as needed, and as, as much as.
Can you tell us a little bit about the, um, wraparound services or follow-up services, uh, once a candidate is selected and hired? What do you guys do next?
Sure. Um, you know, we often, we have several, we have several of our associates have screens. We do planning or other types of things. We typically come back and offer, have a six-month check-in, kind of for self-evaluation. How's it going, other things that, you know, we need to do, I need to myself, I either myself, she does. But they do come to us there, so we do check up on that, uh, make sure that, uh, we do provide, uh,
We do provide a guarantee on, you know, if something happens in two years, you got to separate, have a policy room, we offer a, I don't know, same money back guarantee, and we'll come back and do the search for free. Come back and do the search for free.
Outside of expenses.
Outside of expenses, and we also commit to you that we'll treat your candidate, we'll hide it.
Once they're, once they're there, their years, we take them prior to back to our, to our, to our district's candidate. We provide as much for reference services we need, a lot of individuals.
A lot of things, they kind of have a pretty good idea of what they need, what they need, what they need, what they need.
Help you with the guides you.
Again, Sheila and I both have experienced, we have a lot of, a lot of. No, no, it's fine.
You did a great job, David, thank you. You did a great job, David, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass the microphone.
So, thanks for presenting to us tonight. One question on your candidate, um, how, how do we make sure throughout the process that we expand the search beyond your candidate pool that you currently have resumes for and, and broaden the reach?
You answered a great, answered a great question. Leaders who were not in our, in our network. Uh, so, you know, all those associates, so that we talked about, if you're in Texas, there are several administrative jobs, most of the boards. We push that information out, our research associates, and we're looking to get profile development, they tend to be in contact with around the region, areas that are looking. And they tend to be in contact with people around the research area that are looking for positions. Honestly, you're kind of looking for somebody not... Somebody who's been really great things where they are. And so part of that is six thousand people in our network. It's good we get that information out to them. Okay, they're looking. You know, as a retired guy, I've got emails, I've read that email about opportunities around the... Two of those are the friends of mine that I've worked with. And so we try to use that, uh, as much as possible. Uh, but we, you know, there are certain job boards that case a real... But they keep an eye on. And so we'll work with your HR department. They'll know what people pay attention to this or this one. They may not come to our website, they may not come to your website, but they don't know your website. And so we have to be proactive.
And one other question for me. David, how, how much do you plan to be on-site, um, lead on this account?
Uh, you know, if we're selected, I would plan to be there and maybe onboarding their few guys. Because, you know, as you said, it's your search. So there will be, uh, if we're selected, the next time we need, we would kind of go through a list of questions. You want to do this, or you want to do this. Here's what we suggest to you. How would you be a part of that? So desire. During stakeholder meetings, if you would like those to be in-person. If my schedule allows, Michael, would you be there? You know, connecting with my wife is always working with Michigan. So I would be there at those stakeholders. My current job allows me to be there. And then when you go through your first round of, uh, selecting candidates. Typically, one of us and a lot of times it's me. We're gonna be there to go through that. Because we'll typically screen those down to below thirteen. We think that your... You take some couple outs. Where you decide we really want interviews. When you do interviews, uh, we like... And if some of this comes down to, you know, there's expenses involved. So if Sheila's able to, you know, have paper applied, they'd be there. That may work out well. Uh, when it comes time to, when it comes to interviews. We like one of us to be there. Virtually, they go through that matrix. The kinds of matrix, the matrix to see, the matrix to see. Because we all have feelings about this matrix. But this matrix really gives you a little more...
And if, if I, if I can add... If I added that, um...
The really helpful to add.
Either David there or myself there. Or if you remember, if you remember, if you were going through our team, it might be Kathy who was there with us. But there's typically two of us that are present. Or, um, many of the tasks that are associated with the super.
If not one of us, there's two of us that are present.
As you can imagine, the thirty-one qualities, matrix for spreadsheets. Thirty-one of the X-acts, how many stakeholders you surveyed. Kind of helps assign somebody.
Do we see all of the candidates that apply for the job in addition to the top for us?
You can if you want to. And I think we have online access to our application system. You get passwords, you really get to look at those. Because, you know, we're not built for the best of our building. So you may, you know, think, oh gosh, I heard this person speak. I really like him. I don't see them. I know they applied. And I know they applied. And, and so we do our best. Kathy being full-time, and our full-time staff in Iowa. That helps in Iowa. If I can call her, she'd rate you whatever I'm saying. I know, I know it's a, it's a... It's a... You know, we hope, we hope we can make this as painless as possible for you. But we also know that you're finding, hurting persons. That would be great, especially if you're a staff member.
We also know that this is one of the most important tasks that you have. And we know how, we know that it's critically important for the success of your school. And so it's our goal to make sure that you get the very best candidate. Because it's really about ensuring that the high-quality educational programs that you provide for your students continue. That that momentum continues. And we want to make sure that it does as well. We're here to support you along the way. We're here to coach you, teach you.
Support you along the way.
Uh, question for either one of you, doesn't matter. Because this is, we did see the, or you mentioned the online access to applicants. In what other way are you going to be able to leverage talent?
Well, you know that online access is important. I think, uh, this is technology. The use of that makes it, uh, sorry. Really brings it all. And it makes it... It's not a simple analysis, right? It's more qualitative, it's more supportive. But it allows you to kind of see, but it allows you to see what you're looking at. Obviously providing that access, uh, access to applications to you. I think it's going to be available for you. It's going to be available for you.
Yeah, you know, you, you talk about the thirty-one qualities. Uh, the matrix that we bring you. It's all done, um, through technology. It's going to rank those thirty-one qualities by the different stakeholder groups that are included in it. And so you're going to be, we're going to be able to show you, um, that spreadsheet, that...
The spreadsheet, uh, via technology. We're also going to use, uh, a system that helps you tabulate, um, the, uh, ranking of candidates. And again, we use technology for that too. So we incorporate technology, um, as much as we can, as, uh, to keep the process moving along. Keep it simple, um, and keep it effective and efficient.
Okay. Information, if you're gonna have that and information from... Some of this comes down to...
And so that, that'll rely on that. And that's it.
How long? What is the timeframe of the board selection of candidates? Against a one-way video interview, completing matrix scoring instrument, deliberate to reach a consensus on candidate events with kind of that. How long is the search? It's in, how long until we get, uh, complete consensus building matrix?
Sure. I take, actually, I have a great question. It'll take us, uh, it'll take a couple of weeks on developing this profile. Visiting with you, visually, uh, setting up a, uh, stakeholder meetings where you get feedback from... Community, uh, and then you'll have to spend some time on that information to develop that profile. Then we can add that. And then that, uh, once we get to that point, that can take... Thanksgiving coming up, we have... Great, so we can have to slot those things in.
We do, we, we, we do. It's, it's in, we do, it's, it's the proposal, um, that we, we submit down on page six. The timeline, let it grab the suggested timeline. But it just gives you a sense of the number of... We said it would take the five different stages.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
As we select you, will you be handling any other searches at the same time? Or just focusing on ours?
Generally speaking, ours will be regional consultants that may have kind of the data. So right now, they should be the primary focus.
Mine as well. Mine as well.
And I believe the third person or staff or...
Okay, thank you both. It was a pleasure talking to you.
It was a pleasure with you and with you. Worked with you, loved to be selected. You're behind our schools and, uh, so you guys will... Heads at the pillow at night, you're able to rest easy. Everything I, I didn't mention, I don't think, it's our proposal. But we do offer the vice-smashing. Comes down to a thousand here or there, and you just really have this angst. If, if one of the firms you have, you have very similar services. So you, our, our also presenters have...
Okay.
Diddle, diddle on what David said. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present it. And I also want to thank your staff. You have a couple of great staff members who are really helpful. So David and Sarah, they're tremendous. Have great assets to your, just, uh, they're very helpful all day.
We had trouble, we had trouble.
Just very accommodating and very resourceful.
They're both smiling right now. Thank you for the kind words.
They should.
Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. All right. That brings us to item three point two. This is an action item. I'm not sure the best way to go about this. Do we, right, it's kind of...
Doubt it, yes.
Yeah. So do we, do we take a motion and then have the discussion in the, after the motion? Right? Or do we just want to talk about it now? Come to have a motion? Let's just talk about it now. We'll do it, uh, we'll do it easy way. Phil, Brad, Sparrow?
Hazard, Young, Atia and Associates. Only custom presentation. That has Midland Public School regularity on every page. It's not a boilerplate document. It's not something we do for any other school district. That is a huge plus for them. I did like Ray and Associates that he did say Midland Public Schools. That wasn't even mentioned by one of the others. And also describing our demographic as Midland and what we were made of. Him doing the research to look into who we are.
I was also impressed with the personalization from, um, from Hazard Young. That was one of the first things I noticed. Um, they also, um, put a lot of emphasis in both their proposal and in the presentation of... And lots of ways to do that, using QR codes. Um, and I think that's important of, um, I think what I'm looking for is making sure that when we're creating that candidate profile, that we're getting...
Comments? I like both. I like... As the broader scope of HYA and Ray and Associates. I appreciate how Brad addressed the question, but I just, I kind of have the impression that MASB can't cast as wide a net as these national firms would. That would certainly, uh, search nationwide. So, uh, of the, of the three, those would be my, my top two choices. I lean towards, uh, HYA. Think they've got, um, more nationwide, a hundred and thirty HYA associates. Dr. Shivers and... All of the things being equal, I think that's, that, that's... And I think they've got, they, granted, it was twenty-four years ago, but, um, you know, when the, that nineteen ninety-nine search, if I've got my years straight, was the transition from Art Frack to Gary Hughes. Um, and that was a, that was a... It's a shift. I mean, that was a big search process and, and so I think they, you know, that, granted, it's a long time ago, but I, I think that, that matters for... So I would lean towards HYA. In addition to all the resources already mentioned.
I was, um, I was really impressed with the thought that went into HYA's, um, response to our RFP as well as their presentation and the personalization. I also thought that they made a really good case on how they gather candidates. MASB, I just, it wasn't that we were going to see anybody from outside of maybe the Midland. And Ray and Associates. Put my finger on it, but I did... Diverse pool and have a, a great group of candidates to pick from. And I can't exactly tell you why, um, but that was kind of my impression. Uh, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about some of the prices. Well, actually, but Ray and Associates, at least based on my read-through, was significantly higher than... Well, significantly higher certainly than MASB and a little bit higher than HYA. So something certainly to consider as we're addressing all these.
So HYA is a, um, middle, kind of middle of the road price point. Uh, but I think we get, uh, more luck than we would with, um, MASB. Ray, I, I liked them. I, I, I felt like they were two arms-length, right? Like they were always, they weren't like they were going to be here, um, maybe when we needed them because, um, you know, let's face it. We're very new to this. Um, I haven't done this in ten years and none of you have gone through this process, so...
And you gave him an opportunity to say, well, Sheila's in Northville. You know, if you want her to take the lead.
Right, and, and he didn't. So I was, I was a little... And it seemed like they just always circle back to this matrix. You know, there was no real other options there. This is going to fix it. You know, he, I think that was the answer to your question, Brad. Kyle was together for us and, well, we'll look at the matrix. So I didn't really like that. Um, I, I was equally impressed and I agree with, with all the comments about HYA and, and your comments about, um, MASB. So, uh, it, it, my, I guess, initial choice would be to, to go with HYA as well.
The other, um, plus or noticeable thing, um, was with HYA, those app, the applications, we see them as they come in. Um, they didn't say there was like a closing date and then we look at them and then you see them. Part of the technology piece was it comes in and you see it. Um, and I think that there's a lot of knowing who's applying and when, um, in addition to, um, the tier system of, of all of the conversations that they will have with people and then...
Yeah.
Rank them for us.
And, and, and there's more, I think, than, than just, you know, the, the paper that we have in front of us. I really had a good feeling while Mike, you know, he was a very personable guy. He's, he, um, what he was talking about, he's got a wealth of experience. And he, I thought he had a great answer how he would deal with a board, kind of like our makeup. Um, and I think that's, that was a really good thing. Phil, do you have anything?
Yeah, the only, I think you guys have all covered it well. I tried to take a backseat since we've had this. We've been looking at it a little deeper than the board. I think the thing that tipped me with over... One, the personalization, but more importantly, the community involvement process. I think Midland is a really unique community in that we have people that are extremely engaged in our schools. And we're extremely blessed to have a community so involved, so we owe it to our community. It's not just us as representatives of the community, but the community has direct input, um, throughout that process. And, y, y, you know, being conservative, I keep looking at the price tag. And it is a difference, obviously, with MASB being like seven to ten thousand dollars lower cost. But I think when you're looking at, hopefully, finding somebody with, you know, seven to ten years runway, I think it's a very reasonable and prudent, um, investment for us to make as a district to make sure that we get the right candidate. Hence why we also scored in our first looking at the candidate. A price as twenty percent and the years as forty and forty percent. The score, the weighting of the scores, so...
It, to, to follow up on your, uh, point, uh, when you mentioned a tipping point for you. Uh, coming into this, I was leaning toward MASP. I really, um, liked the Michigan connection. I liked, uh, the access that they provide to us, that they would be here with every, every step of the way, twenty-six miles away. Uh, but he really, they didn't do a good job flushing out how they would engage the community. And didn't elaborate on how we're going to draw candidates from, you know, the vastness that we're looking for. So, uh, for all of those reasons, my, my choice now is, is HYA. And... Go ahead, Jen.
I haven't heard comments of all the board members. I moved that we enter with Hazard, Young, Ataya and Associates in the form that was in their, the form of the letter agreement that is in their, um, uh, proposal. I would recommend that we have this reviewed by our outside counsel just before we enter into the agreement, but I have no reason to think it's not a perfectly appropriate retainer agreement.
Support? Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Lauterbach, support by Mr. Roush. Any additional discussion? I think we could probably maybe negotiate some of that pricing with them as well and see how much room there is to, to wiggle there, uh, without sacrificing service. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Just, sorry. On the, the expenses, as somebody that travels quite often, it's probably not enough travel expense per day. So we may want to see if we can lean on their Michigan, Michigan connection more so that we can use travel. Totally agree with the path forward.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We will, uh, move forward. And with that, um, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Phil, supported by Jen. All in favor?
One thing before we adjourn.
Yes, say it.
I think we should give a shout-out to our high-tennis team.
Congratulations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you. Thanks for taking a round, everybody. We appreciate you.